Health and safety payroll. It was half of what we applied for. And then the remaining balance is the $9,000 for the hazard pay for the public safety officers.
Okay, rolling down a little bit more. You can see the numbers for next year we have projected are pretty close. We do have some new some new homes that have started, so we're hoping that our tax taxes collected next year will go up. We have two or three homes under construction right now. Held up because of construction materials. The 575001, the constitutional and the statutory revenue sharing. This number changed a little bit. One was higher and one was lower. For between the two for a net loss of about 4,000. But the good thing was they gave the state gave COVID relief grants. And so we made up that end sum with this $30,794 grant. And as you can see, all the COVID stuff from this year, we have not extended it to next year because we don't know what's going to happen. We haven't heard anything.
Eric, is that the on that on that line item there? 575001, you just spoke about the constitutional revenue sharing. Under 202021 activity through 33121, the number of 296,000. Where the budget amount was 424,700. Is there another chunk of that coming in yet?
Yeah. Yeah. We have quite a few more payments that we'll still receive.
Will that will that reflect on this year's budget still, or will that is that going to come up on next year's?
No, it'll still reflect on this year's budget.
If you look at the number next to that, the 436, that's what we're
That's projected.
Projecting what we'll get on what the
Those come monthly or quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Every two months.
Okay, so I was just I was just asking because that column is labeled through 331, which is the end of our budget here, correct?
Yeah.
The activity is actually through February 10th, which was when I printed these reports.
Okay, so that column is 21021?
Yeah, but it labels it as 331.
Okay, I thought you were doing like another projection to 331 in that column. Okay, that's that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, the the column next to that one is the projection would be the projection to 331.
Through the end of this budget year. Okay.
The commissioners have any other questions on this page? You see the the 634 opening graves and storage. Cemetery lot sales, both of them did really well this year for some reason. A lot of people. A lot of the cemetery is pretty busy. And the sale of lots really went.
They were home, they were thinking about stuff they needed to plan for.
The last last two line items on this page are the sports park ski skiing tubing passes and the building rental. And as you can see, we are going to be amending that number. But Jason did open up and so we're he's got a projected number of 32,000 and about 2,000 on the building rental. Well, he's already got that today, so. And then you'll see for next year, we're back to about the 50,000 in the 6,000 line. Moving on to page number two. Here you have the concession stand, the very first line item. Up at the sports park and because the it's not open as often or as long. Projecting lower income coming in to the concession stand. This is the next larger item is the campground. There's budgeted $160,000. Our campground start was was delayed this year because of COVID. Think we lost about a month and a half, almost two months of of camping, but still brought in almost 140,000 on a cutback year, which is pretty good. And then for next year, we're projecting a full year of camping.
Assuming the beach concession was closed completely. Yep. So at $10.
As you can see, a lot of the recreation is normally open. The Bessie concession up at the Little League fields and the beach.
Was that Bessie concession was zero?
Yeah. We just couldn't. We couldn't open them up during that time of the year.
Right.
Let's see, getting down here, we got the miscellaneous equipment sales, sale proceeds. Oh, right above that, the DPW capital improvement plan. And Barry's been setting money aside for his for a new garage. And so did you move that one for this year, Barry?
I believe so.
Okay. But he will put that money in by the end of the year. And below that, you have the miscellaneous equipment sale and they have one more piece of equipment to sell. And we don't know if it'll sell prior to the end of the year. What is that's the old grader?
Yes.
And so if that does sell, that number will be up hopefully closer closer above 20,000.
Eric, before we move off of page two here, just going back up one back under recreation under the 662s. Grant revenue, you're looking at 300,000 for next year. What is what is that grant?
That so. Go ahead, Jason, if you want to.
Yeah, so I applied for the Michigan Coastal Management Program grant for $200,000. And then DDA committed to $50,000 and then $50,000 was committed through Mary Creighton's fund as well.
Okay.
And that is for for the boardwalk.
Right. Is that the projected cost to repair and rejuvenate that, the 300,000?
No, we got preliminary costs of $400,000. For both DDA and Mary Creighton's was allocated for next year as well.
Okay. So would that work? Would that work begin in the 202122 year, though? Is that when that grant is expected to award those grants?
Yeah, September, August, they said that should be awarded. So so we'll know we can start design in October. So we kind of figured just design engineering would would start this year and the next year would be a construction.
In in the calendar year of 22?
Yep.
On the large ticket items or items where there's a big change, we had we put the comments right below on it was the first copy was a nice light blue color and it sticks out, but unfortunately through copying in PDF, it just barely looks like light gray. But if you look below the grant revenue, it says boardwalk, Michigan coastal management. DDA and MC for Mary Creighton's.
Okay, MC.
I think that Fourth of July revenue, like everything else. We didn't. We spent a lot less and our revenue was a lot less for the minimum Fourth of July that we had.
We budgeted for a cool event this year, though.
And you can see the wedding fees, you see the mayor sort of dropped the ball. He hasn't had a wedding in a couple of years.
I just figured people are getting smarter.
We thought we should budget another at least one wedding for this year.
I shouldn't make lay of this, but it seems odd that the cemetery funds
Yeah.
increased, wedding funds decreased.
Okay, moving on to page three. A big change here is the sale of land. You can see we didn't budget any money for selling land, but we have brought in $30,072 so far. And we have the Tracy's property, which will add to that.
Darren, you like that, right?
I do. So what what I'm just going to ask, what land did we sell that brought in 30 grand?
There is lots by Family Dollar.
Yeah.
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 Oh, that that did finally sell? Oh, good.
Oh, that's going to be storage units, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. But we can finally get rid of that tennis court.
Yep. If you were to guess storage units, you'd probably be right on most of the property. And transfer from Dr. Mary Creighton's, like again, we that most of that money is split between the cemetery and the rec department and we had a budgeted 190 and we cut that back. Didn't have to pay the lifeguards and some of the other things that that money was used to pay. In the savings from that, because they the amount we get each year is has been smoothed over. And so we know we're going to get about 160,000 every year at least. We're going to spend some a little bit more of the fund balance. We'll still have about a year of cushion in case something something goes bad, but and 50,000 of this will be the going towards the boardwalk. But we'll go over Mary Creighton's tomorrow night. And another line, largest light item is is Ron is going to get a new patrol car and he's got the money and it's fund balance. So that's the $45,000. So if you look at what the budgeted was for this year, it was for 4,452,000 and we only we're expecting just a little over 4 million. So that's, you know, that's about 400,000. A big chunk of that is the the recreation grant that that we didn't get. That was 220,000 and the rest of it is adds up from just some of the, you know, all the things we went over or we had cut or cuts were made to our income coming in because of COVID.
Eric, on a third line down here, the sidewalk replacement that we got 19,000 there on a requested budget. Is that for something in particular? It's quite a bit. It's more than double what we had on last year's. I was kind of curious what
The last year's money got was that the money that you used on Eighth Street, Barry?
Oh. That sidewalk budget actually is if we go we haven't done it a number of years, actually going out and marking the sidewalks in front of people's homes. And it nineteen, we had budgeted 19,000 this year just because we're doing different way we're budget or I don't I don't want to say invoicing, but the way we're doing DPW benefits. We're doing a way we we do DPW benefits different. We started this year and it's kind of more fair to to this department and the general fund, basically, because the general fund was taking the brunt of the the benefits. Now it goes dispersed out to wherever we work. That 19,000 is for, like I say, replacing sidewalks in front of homeowners, which they're billed for that. So you'll see 19,000 in revenue and you'll on the sidewalk side, you'll see 19,000 expenses. If we don't do it, it's, you know, it's a wash, basically.
Got it. The same goes for the grass cutting invoices.
Snow removal.
And and a snow removal. But if you look at this, what what we had amended the budget for this year prior to knowing a lot of our numbers, we're at we're figuring on 4.4 million dollars income and we're pretty much going to do the same same this year with some changes and some capital spend expenditures and and transfer and transfers from funds and transfers from Mary Creighton's. And also the big the big recreation grant. Okay.
Really quick, the the grant that Jason applied for, is that going to be for utilized as in-kind service as well for the for the manufacturing or for the rebuild of the boardwalk? Or are we going to have to sub that out?
What do you exactly mean? So we're going to use as much of that boardwalk as we can when we redo it.
Right. I just, I mean, like if is anybody from DPW or the city is going to help build that? And if so, are wages able to be utilized from that grant for the city's portion of labor?
Yeah, 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 we could definitely do in-kind services. We just for granting purposes, we got a preliminary design and a number from K and M Industrial that's authored by DPW. And they have all the equipment right there. They're already mobilized. They have the the vibratory auger, all that kind of stuff to do that. He's been doing a lot in Sonington. So but yeah, there is a line item for that grant for in-kind services, that type of thing.
That's all. Thank you.
Yep.
And this time it'll be built so that it'll withstand the high water. Unless it gets so bad, you have to build an ark, then it won't be under water. Okay, getting to the revenues and we've just finished the revenues, but getting to the appropriations or the expenditures, the first category up is 101101, and that is the city commission. We have kept the the payroll the same. Unless directed, we're just guessing because we talked about a little bit last year, we are one of the lowest. You guys are one of the lowest paid commissions and in in not only Delta County, but the the UP.
Have a look at the quality of work that we produce.
One line item that we did go over budget on, and that would be the one that for the most part gets caused by our our friend down the down the street from us here. And some of these actually will be getting some reimbursement from because we do have the the golf course and the housing commission is involved in there, too. And getting down down towards the bottom, you see the Fourth of July. And we're hoping and crossing our fingers that we're going to have a real full-time Fourth of July this year.
I just have to ask, what the heck is the red, white and blue expenses?
Sounds like we have a volunteer.
No, no, I wanted to know what it is.
That was a beer and wine tasting sort of get together that was held down at the park on the 3rd of July.
Okay, that answers that.
Okay, we'll scroll over to page four. And oh, real changes in here. To get down towards the the pilt for the housing commission and Thorn Tree. This is, as I explained on the other page, instead of sending the having that as an expense, we're we're just showing it as the the partial income. So we'll no longer have that line item, including for the end of this year. And that was it, city commission. So for next year, we're we're looking at 100 and about $104,000 for the commission.
What was the big change from that? I'm looking over the numbers here. What was the where's the 40, the $80,000 difference there?
From the budget?
Yeah, from the under city commission, but we had the amended budget of 181 and then now next year we're looking at 103.
Well, the pilt payments are a big part of it.
It's a pilt.
Okay, okay, yeah, there's. Yeah, there's 32,000 right there. Yeah.
Payment in the payment lieu and I mean, the transferred upon balance, that number will change.
Because, okay, yeah, that'll change those three right there. That's it right there.
Yeah, that number will change as to what the income and expense, final income and expenses are. So that's that's the number that should be up. Should be up around around 200,000 hopefully, and there will be transferred to fund balance for for next year, too. So there that number will increase significantly, too.
Yeah, I see it now.
Do we usually put that number in during the budget? So, okay. The next category is the city manager and there aren't any big changes. You can see my estimated year-end wages, you have to do the COVID because I I was off for two weeks with COVID. So so there was some COVID money there and and so you get down to the bottom and I'm actually cutting the budget by about $400. Next up is elections. And we'll have this Kim out there in the crowd.
Elections, you want me to, we have one year city commission election in November. As of this moment, there's nothing else scheduled throughout the year. That could change, you know, if some entity put a proposal out there or something, but otherwise we're free and clear November until November. I will be attending some training in December of 2021. If they're dedicating that to in person, so hopefully by then we're in person. Otherwise, it's going to be kind of a quiet year for the upcoming budget. This past year was a bit unusual for many reasons.
The the reason for the budgeted 23,000 and looks like you're going to end up at about 30,000. Some of that was was grant money, wasn't it, Kim?
Yes, that we were using that to show with our revenue sharing that we were doing that. We were forced to this year by the new improved envelopes that we weren't warned about that we were having to do it and and had to budget for that. Or, you know, plan to budget for that. So that took us by surprise. The state did step up and pay a portion of that due to under the COVID funds. So we were only billed for the remainder of those those that went by population and how much they would pay. And then also we did purchase through that grant a 50% grant that I applied for to get that extra tabulator. And so those were some additional expenses that we wouldn't probably had done at that time. We might have planned them out better, but we had no choice. So it had to be done. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
We did get the new driver's license readers, too.
Oh, yes, yes. And those weren't like on a grant necessarily. They were at a reduced rate with the state under the the COVID supplies. But we were able to use that to show, I believe in our reporting for our revenue sharing of that we we purchased those items due to COVID with that, so. with that, so. But now we have them, so.
So, big change there is the fact we don't have a presidential election next year.
Right, yeah, this past year was, you know, we had presidential primary, the state primary, and then the big November one, along with also the expenses of buying Plexiglas and making, thanks to the electric department, saving me by them making them, but still the cost of purchasing all of those. That's not something normally we hadn't planned or budgeted, so this, this past year was a like everything else, a bit different, but going forward, this year should be a quiet year, like I said, up until the big city commission election in November.
Okay, moving on to one ninety-two, the office clerk. Do you have anything to say about that one, Vicki? There's
Um, not really. The only difference is the raise, which is in the union contract.
Okay, next up. Anyone has a question, just step right in. Next up is city assessor, which pretty much the same as last year. I know Janice is out there somewhere.
I'm here.
No big changes for next year. You are getting a a new desktop computer.
Yep.
Which she needs, because she has bought a eight-inch notepad that she works and I don't know how you work on that little thing.
It's not that small.
Border review. Looks like same, same number. City treasure. Pass it over to
Mine is actually going down. I really don't have anything. It's pretty much status quo. More transportation and lodging is down because most of the trainings are virtually now, so, which makes it nice. But other than that, I really don't have anything. Anything, no.
Okay, next up is city clerk, Kim again. Anything new and exciting in years, Kim?
Nope, I'm just worth more to you guys. Nothing, nothing exciting, the usual increases, too, you know, our insurance did go up a little bit and things like that, but and I am getting a new hard drive. It was back in twenty sixteen was the last one I had, and so I was scheduled for replacement, just just of the hard drive, so. That's my new and exciting in there.
Okay, moving down to city hall, as you can see, city hall, the payroll went way down this year. We usually had off and on during the summer and and during the winter, we had young people working here and assisting us in various jobs. And of course, with COVID, we couldn't do that, so that number went down and projecting it'll probably stay down. Come back about halfway, it looks like, and dropping down to seven four oh, materials and supplies. We're looking at a big screen TV monitor for the the chambers at in city hall, could be used for Zoom meetings. This four thousand dollars would be improvements to the city from the Mary Creighton funds. Come in handy, especially when you're showing people property lines and G I S or during commission meetings for putting on presentations. And then we'll put it, we're looking at putting that right out the wall, so you'll be able to sit at your your chairs and and see it right in front of you.
Eric?
Yep.
I don't want to be that guy that asks the questions about the computers and so on, but I guess I'm going to be that guy. Where are we getting the the estimates from? Is it from D S Tech or or from whom?
On
Well, like the monitor, the hard drive for Kim's computer. The other one for Janice's, is that coming from D S Tech themselves or?
Um, D S Tech isn't, we're working for us anymore, we're actually working with Mark Kristoff. And Adam Zimmerman has been doing, has been sort of our go-between, between Mark and and the city, and so I think Adam spec'd these out.
Okay. It just seemed a little high, it was all. For a, for a hard drive, I was surprised to see it was thirty-one hundred, not that, not that Kim doesn't need it, I'm just surprised to see that a hard drive for a computer was at thirty-one hundred dollars.
There's additional things in there besides the hard drive. Like, I get the the yearly charge for the email, for the clerk's email. If there's other services in there, too, for what I pay for to have there are, are as the city hall for them acting as our I T, so that yearly charge is in there as well.
I got you. There's more built into it.
Yes, yes, the, that was the new thing in that line item, above and beyond the traditional yearly expenses.
All right, I get that. I would imagine it's probably software that's also built in, that there's licensing fees and so on.
Yeah, yeah, I I can look up and get back to you on how much they quoted me for that, but
No, that's okay. I I get it that there is additional with the licensing fees and so on for software.
I should have been clearer on that. I didn't.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Okay, you can see we switched switched our cleaning company, and you see, we're actually getting cleaner city hall and electric garage for a lot less. Let's see, the computer. We're looking at, what was the seventeen thousand for, for the computers this year?
That was, that's just normal.
Was that D S Tech's contract? And you see the way we're dividing it up and doing a lot in-house, that's a pretty good drop from seventeen down to twelve hundred. And capital outlay. This was my little project. It didn't work out this year. I have them doing the tuck pointing. One whole side has been done, and I meant to have them do the front. And I contacted them and I contacted them too late, and so we're gonna try again this spring. I know some of the bricks on the front of city hall are 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 very ready for tuck pointing. Getting down to the next category, we have cemetery grounds, maintenance and burial. Barry, would you like?
Sure. I guess there isn't much difference this year from last year. The big one would be, we're looking at spending fifty-five thousand of Mary Creighton's money. Uh, if you don't know, this year we got the cemetery up and online. You can go right on the website there and look up all kinds of information. I budgeted five thousand dollars to have somebody physically go out and make sure that that map is accurate and all the information is correct. That's out of Mary Creighton's money. I put thirty-five thousand dollars in for a new sign up there, the sign up there. Fernwood does not have a sign at all. It's got a little plaque on the building, and that's about it. Uh, five thousand and wheat control and fertilizer. Uh, green burials, we talked about that last year, implemented, but with COVID that was put on hold. So we're looking at doing something with that this year. And after, after, you know, it looks like a hundred and thirty-one thousand at the cemetery, but after you take out the Mary Creighton's, we're looking at, we're looking at about eighty-one thousand. For the revenue.
Barry, where can you, Barry, where can you go and find that, the online thing? I'm on the, I'm on the city website right now. Is that on the city website?
You can actually go, I believe, if you, if you go right up to the top and you look into under G I S. There should be Fernwood Cemetery and parcel map, I believe.
I'm on the Fernwood, I'm under city departments, Fernwood Cemetery.
Did it come up?
No, it's just, it's got rates, rules, there's a picture of the building there and
Yeah, yeah, go back to the homepage, Brad.
Homepage, yes.
Okay.
And G I S on the top right. Put your mouse over that.
Okay, is there a way that we can get that, that link just linked over under the department, too? Because I wouldn't, I would have not looked, thought to go to G I S.
That's one thing, one thing, one thing we're gonna, we're trying to work on to get the a actual, instead of saying G I S and Fernwood Cemetery or something, because a lot of people have questions on the Fernwood Cemetery, and I'd like to have that right on the homepage somewhere.
Yeah, I'm looking at this under the G I S right now. This is fantastic. This is really nice. As far as people finding family members or, you know, doing any type of genealogy work, that, that is, it's really good.
You can zoom right in and pick your spot.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and you can see the names and everything.
Hopefully, you don't find your name there.
Not yet. No, I just, I, you had mentioned that I, I know we had talked about before, and I didn't know it was up and running, and I just wanted to check it out. It's, it's excellent.
Yes.
Another thing that the the person that will be doing when they check where the were to make sure that the G I S is accurate, is they'll, they'll be taking a picture of the headstone itself, and so when
Well, that'll be linked in there? That'd be, wow, that's gonna be cool.
Then when you click on there, you can actually see the headstone. Okay, rolling down, we're in department three oh one, the police department. And Ron is here somewhere.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, like everybody else, we'll go with the big ticket items, I guess. Payroll, you're gonna see an increase from six seventy-five to seven hundred and twenty thousand. Payroll includes holiday longevity, max healthcare buyback, overtime. Um, and for the P S O and command contract, that's a three percent raise for all the employees. And a two point six percent raise for the director. Going down to MERS defined benefit, that's one oh one, three oh one, seven oh two, three hundred. That's just your annual increase. It goes from two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three to two seventy-four, two sixteen. Again, that's just your, your annual increase for MERS defined benefits. A new line that started this current fiscal year is the H S A employer, one oh one, three oh one, seven oh two, five oh one. That's the city-funded healthcare savings plan for Aaron, Matt, Dylan, Brad and Nick. Again, that was through contract negotiations. That's the fifty dollars a week or twenty-six hundred dollars a year for each of them into a healthcare savings account. Gordon Olson State status quo at twenty thousand, proposed twenty thousand again this year. We're looking at possibly getting some new body cams. Replacements. Night vision goggles has been mentioned, and possibly shotguns. The other big ticket item is the capital outlay. Police cruiser has one oh one, three oh one, nine seventy. Last year, we didn't get a cruiser, so there was, there was no funds in there. This year, we proposed forty-five thousand dollars. That's for the new cruiser. The upfitting and decals, and also possibly if we can fit it in that forty-five thousand, a new eight hundred radio. I did get several quotes already on some vehicles and the Fords that we drive right now came in at thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, so I hate to say it, we can't, we can't go with the Ford anymore. We're kind of looking at the Dodge Durangle B six all-wheel drive or a Dodge Charger again.
What's wrong with the Ford's, Ron?
Fords, I mean, if we budget forty-five thousand dollars for a new, new vehicle plus the upfitting plus decals.
Okay.
If just the cruiser alone is thirty-nine thousand, we, we just can't afford it.
Okay, okay, I thought there was something that wasn't working for you, like with the, with the layout or the vehicle or something, it's just the cost.
No, yeah, I just, I should have rephrased that, I guess, just the, just the vehicle alone without fitting is thirty-nine thousand dollars, so.
Gotcha, okay.
And that's through my deal, so, fortunately, I have to X that one off. We, we can't go with that anymore. They're getting too expensive. I don't know why, but they're just too expensive.
What's the Dodge committed?
Your Dodge Durangle B six all-wheel drive is twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. The Dodge, you know, the Dodge Durangle B eight all-wheel drive is thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then your Dodge Charger B six all-wheel drive is thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five.
That's significant.
It is. Just remember, tho- those prices will change probably by the time we order a vehicle, because there's always like mileage to bring it to the bridge is usually where we pick it up, and it always varies a little bit, but that's, that's kind of a ballpark estimate from my deal right now.
Right.
That's a twenty thousand dollars difference.
There is, and I mean, even upfitting, I'll be honest, every year that we we purchase a vehicle, it's always it's always tough, because it kind of, it seems like vehicles are always changing, so you don't know if you can reuse equipment. I've talked to a place out of Green Bay to do upfitting possibly. And the problem we're gonna have if we go with the Dodge Durangle, a twenty-twenty-one Dodge Durangle, which is kind of what we're leaning towards. They're not really manufacturing the equipment that goes in it yet, such as your center councils and your cages. So if we got a Dodge Durangle, I'm not even sure when they'd be able to upfit it. So we got that dilemma right there. Um, other than that, we got the police cruiser C I P, which is one oh one, three oh one, nine seventy. You're gonna see an increase from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. That's just the the funds that we set aside for for future cruisers. Any questions on three oh one?
Ron, you mentioned somebody, eight hundred radios, that's just a mobile, correct?
It's just the mobile, yes, not the, not the portable.
How many, what was it, what was the cost of that again? I'm just trying to find it when you're saying it.
The cost, I have the quote is, I got a quote for an A P X forty-five hundred mobile through LCOM, and I think it's right around thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Well, we can, the radio I have right now, which is is the Motorola in the cruiser. There's nothing wrong with it. It's just obsolete, so I guess There's nothing wrong with it. It's just obsolete. So I guess based on the final quotes on a new cruiser decals and upfitting. You know, we could possibly reuse the radio and look at replacing it some other time.
No, I would, just from, you, you understand what's going on with eventually if the other commissioners. Trying to migrate from this bifurcated system we have in Delta County where we have eight hundred megahertz and VHF. The nine one one authority is purchasing, we purchased first, all first responders in the county portable radios. But they couldn't afford to do a mobile radios on top of it. So like Ron was saying, obsolete. There's probably updates that needed to be done with these radios, but they would no longer support that. So it's a smart thing to go ahead and start getting those mobile radios updated when they can as well.
I've replaced one so far out of the four cruisers that we have, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on three oh one? So I guess the big tick items are always, you know, it's always payroll. And then, you know, you got forty-five thousand dollars alone just for the new cruiser and upfitting and everything.
Next up is the K nine program.
Yeah, if there's, the, the K nine program, again, your big ticket item, I guess if you wanna. Keep using that term as a, as a new cruiser. I'm hoping to get a, a new cruiser. The K nine side, right now Ryan's driving a twenty-fourteen Ford Interceptor. It's got well over a hundred thousand miles on it. So there's gonna come a point in time and hopefully this year that we look at replacing that and again. We can't really go with the Dodge Charger for a K nine, so we're looking at hopefully that Dodge Durangle. But I guess it all depends on what the quotes come to. And we budgeted forty-five thousand, proposed forty-five thousand for a regular cruiser on the police side. And now we're looking at forty thousand on the K nine side, so we're, hopefully we can get a cruiser and upfitting for that amount. That forty thousand dollars is, is a transfer from the donations. It's not general fund dollars, so.
How much is left in that donation, in that fund?
On my end, Brad, it's about forty thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Oh, it says that there. I, I.
Yep, so we're.
Too many small numbers on these sheets, I said, where is all together?
Yep, so once we, you know, if we can, in fact. Get the cruiser upfitting and decals for, for forty thousand dollars. I mean, you're looking at about four hundred and forty-four dollars left in that, in donations. Obviously, this year because of COVID, we weren't able to go out and solicit really, and we weren't able to hold some of the. Programs we were looking at doing and stuff like that, so. You know, hopefully things get a little bit better and we're able to, to do some programs and seek more donations to build that donation fund back up.
To do something on the Fourth of July?
Yeah, we have, we've had some things in mind, Fourth of July through the volunteers and that is, is one thing, but.
Yeah. Demonstration with the K nine or something and then say, hey, you know, it seems like whenever you ask money for, you know, not only. Police, but then you combine the dog on top of it, it's like, I don't know, to me, it's like money falls out of people's, people's wallets.
Yeah, that's the way it was explained to me is get the dog and the money will come. I hope that rings true this, this coming year, this year, so.
Yeah, yeah, just forget twenty twenty, that was a mess.
Exactly.
We could do a dunk tank, dunk the cops, not donuts.
Do you volunteer?
I did it before. I, I actually liked it. If you can believe it, I usually, cause people also spend more money.
So any questions on the K nine other than that, like I said, I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're gonna be able to. To get a new cruiser, but I'm, I'm hoping that's kind of what we, our whole campaign was for, is to get the dog. The training and to get a new cruiser, so. I think we're at that point. We just gotta try to make it fit into a budget. Into that forty thousand dollars, so. I'll do my best, see what happens.
Okay, head to the fire department.
Fire department. Again, I'll just touch on payroll because I, I did some things there and that's. It's actually a small increase, but I'm looking at a three percent raise for Angel, the state status quo with the, the rest of the department. The PSOs. I'm also proposing that we raise. We give the volunteer fire chief a raise. He makes thirteen dollars an hour right now, which is equivalent with the rest of the volunteer firefighters. I'm proposing that he goes up to fourteen dollars an hour just because his, his duties are a lot more than just the regular volunteer firefighter. You're gonna see an extra line in there and again, that's the HSA employer. It's one oh one, three, three, six, seven oh two, five oh one. Again, that's an added line for this year. If approved, and that's for Angel, for the city funded healthcare against the. Status quo with the PSOs that are getting that fifty dollars a week or twenty-six hundred dollars a year. Other than that, we got repairs and maintenance on equipment, which is one oh one, three, three, six, nine, three, five. You're gonna see a four thousand dollar increase there. And that's just because we need a hydrostatic testing on our SEBA bottles this year. We're at that five year mark. So I reached out, I got a quote on that from a company out of Wisconsin that Escanaba Township uses. They talk highly of them. The quote is right around eleven hundred dollars. We also have to do flow testing on our SCVs. A quote from Palmosol on that is right around eighteen hundred dollars, so. There's some maintenance and some testing that need to be done on our SCVs, is why there's an increase. The big increase, contracted service, one oh one, three, three, six, nine, four, zero. You're gonna see an increase from five hundred dollars to seventy-one hundred dollars and that's for Safety Works. Our city Safety Works program. That's, that's our share for the volunteers and the PSOs. Capital Altley, one oh one, three, three, six, nine, seven, zero. There's not a big increase there, but just to let you know, we're looking at purchasing some wildland turnout gear. It's something that's been talked about for a while. The guys right now are using their structural firefighter gear, which is too. It's too bulky, it's too hot, it's too cumbersome when you're fighting wildland firefighters, uh, wildland fires. Which we do a lot in the spring. We get a lot of grass fires and stuff, so. I think it's important for the guys to have a jumpsuit, a wildland jumpsuit. I got quotes on that and it's right around two hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-three cents to three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents, depending on how big the guy is. So that's what those funds are hopefully gonna be used for. And lastly, the fire truck CIP, the one oh one, three, three, six, nine, seven, zero, 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 one. Again, those are just the funds set aside for a, a new fire truck in the future. We're at the point now where our pierce is a nineteen ninety-six. I know the recommendation, depending on who you talk to, was replace a fire truck every fifteen to twenty-five years, so we're already there. I certainly wouldn't want to buy a fire truck right now though, because our, our new, our freightliner is fairly new, so I don't want two brand new trucks. I'm hoping to stretch it a little bit more, get five, six more years out of the pierce, kind of staggered a little bit, so we don't have two brand new trucks. If that makes sense, so.
It's a new truck run, about four hundred thousand or so?
Yeah, you're talking a good four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, yep, depending on what specs you get, so it's. They're not cheap by any means. And right now, I mean, I hate to, hate to say it, but. I talked to Vicky, there's only sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars in that fund, so. You know, set it in a way twenty thousand a year, that's. You're looking at purchasing in five, six years, you're gonna be nowhere near that four hundred thousand dollars, so that's a concern.
Yeah, yeah, it would be about half of what we need or not even.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a concern. Unless there's any questions, that's. All I got.
Ron?
Yep.
The volunteer fire chief, does he help with your administrative stuff as well?
He doesn't do any of the budgeting type stuff, but he does. Like he sets up the trainings. He does the monthly meetings. He attends along with me. He attends the fire chief meetings. He obviously does the, some of the IC on scenes. So I certainly think that he's, you know, he has. Lot more duties than the regular volunteer firefighter, so.
Well, the way I was going with that too, do you, do you feel the, the dollar, dollar an hourism?
Well, I'll be honest, I think, I think for what the volunteers do, they deserve a lot more than what they get.
I would agree.
That's kind of, when I started, they were only making twelve dollars an hour. Then we increased to thirteen dollars an hour. I think that was the first raise the volunteers had had and actually, nobody could tell me thirty years probably. So, is a dollar more enough? Probably not, but it's where we're at, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you had, if you had an extra in the budget, if you felt comfortable even going up to fifteen dollars an hour.
Sure.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's up to you and Eric, I guess, to really, to haggle that out and then we can decide on it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to the fifteen dollar an hour and maybe coming back after the non-COVID year. And see for the volunteers as well, so still want to have a little bit of a gap, obviously, for that duty, extra duties. But I would imagine you have, I know you have volunteers that are also officers around, on the department.
I know you have a couple.
Right.
That's correct. Tenants and whatnot, I mean, you know, you know the changes that came about, not to be real long-winded here, but the training with the. You know, they gotta get X amount of training in, basically thirty-six hours in three years. So last year I increased that they used to get, each volunteer used to get fifty hours a year. I increased it to sixty-two, just because I want them doing at least one hour of training a month, just because of those requirements and they should be training. So there was already a crease, increase last year. I agree they should make more. I would say at this point in time, maybe the next budget year, look at maybe increasing it again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that is it for fire. We'll move on down to Renee's Department Community Development.
So in my budget, the only major difference is payroll and payroll expenses. I'm not gonna go through all the others with either. They're all within just a easy amount of money. The difference in the payroll this year for my budget, it looks like there's like a twelve thousand dollar jump. From the projected activity from this year to next year. But if you add the COVID line item, the COVID payroll to this year's projected payroll. It's only a six thousand dollar increase. And if you look back to the twenty twenty-one budget, it's actually a nine thousand dollar decrease. And what that is, is that, well, one, somebody in my department caught COVID this year, so a bunch of the payroll went. To, to paying that person on COVID leave. And we, I'm, I'm planning for Dave to be full-time. Not full-time, but full part-time next year. This year with COVID, his, his hours were greatly reduced. So we are lower than what we should have been in the projected activity. And then we are also removing clerical, clerical assistance from my budget this year. And trying to utilize existing staff that we have to pick up some of those activities. So that's the big difference in mine. And then, like I said, the only other changes are with payroll expenses. Adjusting based on that, that changed rate.
Okay, moving on, we have DPW admin. And Barry will cover that.
Okay, DPW admin is basically all our. All the guys are in this. And are, are. I don't know how to really say it. It's, it's kind of a catch-all for everybody, everybody at Public Works. As far, as far as the smaller stuff, like I said, we, we started with a DPW. Benefit expense, which take, or had taken some of this, this out of here. You'll, you'll see like health insurance or is eighteen, almost nineteen thousand, that's gonna be budgeted somewhere else and it follows payroll, basically. The two big ones this year in here. Is we got a thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollar. Uh, note for next ten years for the new dump trucks we bought. They come in at three hundred and fifteen thousand that we gotta pay back to the light department. And I budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to crush that concrete pile. That's left over from Ninth Street. We should get about fifteen, twenty thousand yards of gravel out of that. Which will last us for years. But other than that, everything's about the same. I don't know if you got really any questions on that or.
How much money, how, what would, what would it cost to, what's gravel cost? I mean, is that gonna be a cost savings?
Oh, yeah.
Nicely down the road?
I, I went off, what we, what we, about three years ago, we had, we had some crushing. It was about three dollars or four dollars. A yard to crush it. We charge the jobs we do or the other departments eight dollars a yard, so we kind of make a little bit of profit off it for lossage and that. So we, we don't, but if we, we buy that bickler, we're right at twelve bucks a yard.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's a big savings.
Yeah, it is a big savings, yeah. You're talking, yeah, yeah, four times, three times the same, three times the cost.
So it's in a public for ten bucks a yard?
We would be open to that.
Yeah, if there's that much of it.
And actually, I talked to Josh across the street here the other day and, cause he's got that project that's going on with him. With the, the. Doc he's putting in. He's interested in buying some gravel, cause he needs quite a bit, so. Recoups on that money right away.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm coming a little bit late, so I had to step away for a quick second, but the. I know at one point we had talked, we, meaning the softball. High school softball group was talking with Darcy. When this Ninth Street project was coming about with some of the remilling and being able to utilize some of the. The, the mill or the residual from tearing up the road for any type of gravel. Or I should say more of a fill for up in the parking area at the sports park, or at the softball complex. That's still a possibility or has all that been pretty much reutilized?
The, the milling, paint and dull took a hundred percent of that.
Okay.
That was part of their. Their. Uh, bid, bid it with a hundred percent, because I actually asked them to, if, if I could purchase some and they, they said no. Because they use that for new asphalt.
Okay, no, that's fine. And you were saying something else about the gravel. I guess that's where that kind of led to my question. Is there gravel that can be purchased?
Yes. And something like that, I would think, you know, just off the top of my head there, you know, I, I would say with, we could. And something like that, I would think, you know, ju- just off the top of my head there, you know, I, I would say we could probably sell it at a cost since it's a. You know.
Okay.
The softball.
I'm sure we can work out something, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Getting towards the end of administration, uh, we talked earlier, that twenty thousand dollar, uh. CIP DPW building, that's where you move that, uh.
Yes.
That twenty thousand dollars is wanted to. Show everybody that.
Um, when do we plan on doing that? New DPW building?
Hopefully within the next two years.
Yeah.
Hopefully be in one in the next two years, put it that way.
Yeah.
Um, next up is forestry. This is sort of a multi-department job in the works. See for what we, uh, budgeted and for what, uh, we actually spent so far this year. Uh, pretty much doubled and that's, a good part of that is all the black ash. The dead black ash we're getting rid of and so we'll be doing the same. About the same amount next year. Grounds maintenance, very.
Yeah, grounds maintenance, this is, uh. Basically, our payroll is on anything that, uh, the city owns. That is not a facility. Or a park system, it's when we go cut grass, uh, on, on some empty lots we have or, or. City-owned lots that doesn't fall under basically direct department or that. Uh. Also, when we do grass cutting invoices inside, that's where you'll see the grass cutting, the sidewalks and the snow removal. Uh, is all in the ground, under the grounds, maintenance payroll. And also, if you look, there's materials and supplies and the equipment rentals. And when you looked at the, uh. Revenue on the, the general fund on those three, they match up with the expense on, on here.
Okay, moving on down to beautification. Um, the rec department does the beautification part with reimbursement for. A good portion of it from the DDA. Um. Did you want to take this, Jason?
Yeah, so, um. Uh, we get fourteen thousand one hundred dollars from the DDA, um, for this, uh, nothing really has changed here. From, from, from previous years, so, um. I, I, I just added a line for brochures or for the, um, for printing and publishing. Um, for three hundred dollars for brochures that we want to do for just, uh, marketing or downtowners. Um, bike pass and, and walking pass, that type of thing, so. Um, but yeah, this is funded by DDA, basically.
Okay, next up alley maintenance.
Yeah, the alley, alley maintenance, uh, has, has went up about ten thousand dollars. Probably eight to ten thousand dollars from the last couple of years here and it's just. We got to start doing more with the alleys, uh, we haven't really did too much with them. Uh, we just got to start doing some more maintenance to, to catch up on them. And this isn't any paving or, or concrete, it's just basically gravel and trimming trees and grading them and plowing snow.
Next up, five thirty-five, computer and copier expense.
This department is just the citywide, um, materials and supplies and, um. Copies and postage, um, and there's an offsetting revenue. Um, that, um, offsets that expense, which gets charged, you know, to the different departments. So this department is basically just a wash.
And next up would be the motor equipment pool.
This department is, is basically when, when we work down here on a piece of equipment, whether it's, uh. Well, it's, it's free of any equipment that's in the, in, in the equipment fund is at fifty-three thousand, uh, when we work on other departments' equipment. Uh, it's actually charged right to that department a- as far as a payroll goes. Uh, all the gas, gas and oil and parts for the, the equipment that's in the motor equip, or in the equipment pool is charged to, to this department. The big capital outlay we're looking at this year is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's for a new sweeper. Uh, sweeper we're going to replace is a ninety-nine model, so it's going on almost twenty-three years old, twenty-two, twenty-three years old. Uh, by the time we get a new one. So it's time.
Okay. Moving down, we are, uh, moving to the group in the general fund that are. Is all recreation. Rec admin to start it off.
Okay, yeah, so, um, the major changes on here from, uh, well, this year we had Nicole's retirement and the benefits that kind of went with that as well. Uh, then we had a purchase of, uh, uh, DC Center Capital Outlay, uh, we bought one of the, uh, electrical departments, uh, trucks. Um, that's where that expense comes in, but, uh, for next year, the, the payroll is, is the director's secretary. And then you have, um, all of our benefits, um, the director of full-time benefits under that. I think if you look at the, uh, contractor services, that's Mary Creighton's fund at three five hundred dollars, um, that's, uh. Under, you know, it's, um, offset by Mary Creighton's fund. Then, uh, the, the other, uh, major, uh. Um, change in there would be the, uh, uh, the capital outlay. Actually, the, the contractor service is thirty-five hundred dollars, that's Mary Creighton's fund, uh, offset as well as the, uh. Well, and then the thirty-five, the five thousand dollars under capital, that would be the last payment we have for that, for the Dodge truck that we got from the electrical department this year. And then I guess the, the other two things you see in there would be the, uh, the rec center line item, the eight-one-nine and the natural gas nine-two-two are new, just because, uh. Those are under other rec facilities, but we, uh, switched them over here just so kind of make more streamlined. Cause it, it pertains to the rec administration, um, building and that type of thing or shop, so. Um, that's why there's, there's no past record of that, so. Any questions? All right, so, uh, if there's no question on that one, so the next one, we have the, the parks, um. The, uh, the contractor services for the parks, uh, that's for, uh. The, the thirty-five hundred dollars of that is from, uh, the safety, um. Safety training that we have to do for, for the full-timers and part-time staff. And then twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, which is under the Mary Creighton's fund, uh, is under that as well. Uh, and then, um, the capital outlay, uh. Line item is, uh, that, that's all, uh, to the Mary Creighton's fund, um. That includes a, uh, a, a lawnmower that, that, our, our lawnmower that we have is, um. It, we've had problems over the years, last year it ran, it ran pretty well, um, so. Uh, put that in, in there just in case we wanted to replace, we had to replace the lawnmower that we use throughout the parks. Uh, and we, we do have another one too, it's a two thousand and three, that's, um, been up at this sports park for, since. Was the first, actually first lawnmower that, uh, Al sold at Northgate, um, when he started selling gravy, so. Um, so I kept that in there just in case we have issues with this, with this lawnmower that we have. Um, and then the other item for that would be, um, I purchased, uh, picnic table frames this past year. Uh, lumber was double the price, so I didn't purchase those, so we have fifty frames, um. That we could, uh, you know, this year we're going to purchase, uh, the wood to go along with it, so we can make, you know, so we can have, uh, fifty new picnic tables throughout the parks. And then, uh, the last thing for that would be, uh, park wood chips that we, we're going to purchase those in a couple of years, so we're going to, um, purchase, uh, hopefully for. Uh, semi-trucks of wood chips this year, uh, to go through other parks. Um, so that, that equated to thirty-three thousand dollars, which is on Mary Creighton's fund, it's all offset by Mary Creighton's.
Jason, I have a question for you on the picnic tables. Um, I remember when we purchased those frames, uh. You, I know lumber's still sky-high, have you priced out like, um. Composite material for those, for building those tables? Is that comparable? I know it's usually more expensive than lumber, but at this point I haven't, but you know what that would be? Would it be comparable now? I mean. And you have, I mean, it's free.
Table. Yeah, you know, um. Lumber's double the price, would be about same price as the composite, but, uh, I guess long-term, I was saying long-term, because they destroyed that composite lumber as well as they destroyed the, the treated lumber. Uh, so. I guess long-term, uh, you know, you can sand down the, the, the treated lumber, you can, you know, refinish it, that type of thing. In the future, I'm seeing, you know, if it goes away, it's always gone. The treated lumber's going to go back down and, and composite state is going to stay, you know, almost double that, so. You know, I, I, I guess I could, I could buy all new stuff, um, uh, composite this year, because it is about the same, you know, like. Last time I took drivers and lumber prices changed nearly every day, so, um, basically it has gone down, so, um.
But I guess, I guess. I, I didn't take into account the fact that it gets damaged or vandalized, unfortunately, I was just thinking. Is what the long-term means, so you're talking about, we finish, you say, and we finishing, um. But I never thought that you have to deal with, uh. Unfortunately, people damaging it, either through use or on purpose.
Yeah.
And, and the one thing I've noticed with composite, uh, lumber, when it's used for picnic tables and that is, over time it takes.
Yeah. Yeah. Seen that too.
But it's easy, okay, I've never, yeah, okay, I just, I know for decking, it's, you know, outdoor decking. Um, it just seems to hold up really well, I didn't know how within the, uh, table use.
Yeah, it's just having the, the, the frames are so spaced so far apart, unless you get rough, fix up it, like bears and it tends to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. But there's no more questions on that one, um, we'll go to other rec facilities, uh. Um, there's a few charges this year, the sixty-two thousand, um, sixty-two hundred, which, which is in the eight-one-four on the fishing pier, Tenth Street, um. That was from, uh, worked on, um, on that corner of the mouth going into the harbor to be made a re, uh. Um, repaved that and everything, they, they tore it up and, and fixed that and repaved it all this year, so. That's an extra expense in there for this year. Um, the other things would be for the, for the, uh, next fiscal year, the, uh, forty-two hundred dollars, which is in payroll, that's offset by Mary Creighton's fund. Um, uh, the, the one thousand dollars, uh, for the small pavilion, eight-one-ten. Is, uh, offset by Mary Creighton's fund as well, uh, the, uh, the bathrooms gazebo. One thousand dollars, uh, for painting the, the walls and everything and scraping on the old, the old paint off, uh. That's offset by Mary Creighton's and then, uh. There's a few boars in the, on the, uh, Tenth Street fishing pier that, that they're looking to replace, um, that are curled up over there, so. Um, that's offset by Mary Creighton's as well. Um, and you, you know, most, most of these are offset by Mary Creighton's fund, um, we have the Bill Bowlin, uh, fishing pier, that we're going to, uh. Resan all that railing, repaint all that railing out there and then do some, uh, filling in all those cracks out there, um, that's offset by Mary Creighton's fund. Uh, the, um, the kids kingdom, um. I, I put five thousand dollars in there, we're going to, uh, typically every couple of years, we sand that, the whole thing down, um. Power wash it and we, 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 uh, reseal that as well, so that five thousand dollars is, is offset by Mary Creighton's fund. Uh, and then we're putting wood chips over there as well, so. Um, and the neighborhood playground, the neighborhood parks, uh, the, uh, eight-one-nine is, um, is wood chips and it's offset by Mary Creighton's fund as well, so. Um, and then the fish cleaning, uh, or the wintergreen playground, eight hundred dollars for the wood chips, uh, this Mary Creighton's and then. Um, you seen there, the boardwalk, fifty, fifty thousand dollars this year, uh, is from Mary Creighton's as well. Um, then the last one that, uh, the fifteen hundred dollars, that'd be, uh, um, concrete over by the, the skate park. Uh, that, that, uh, that was kind of, after we put that, or before we put that, um, riprap in there to, to, um. So the water went wash up on the, on the, uh, skate park, uh, so that concrete was damaged on the corner over there, so we're going to repair that this year. Yeah, that's, uh, that's the majority of the, uh. For the, for next year, that's, uh, um, the, I guess the budget items that were changed from previous, previous year, so. Any questions? All right, um, so next, we'll go to the beach, um, the, uh, the twenty-two thousand for payroll, uh, half of that is offset by the Mary Creighton's fund. Then, uh. Then for the contractor services, we usually put money into there, which, uh, uh, we anticipate like every year, um. DPW, uh, moving sand around, uh, over in the beach, just to keep that, that sand, uh. Just keeping any low spots from, from forming over at, over at the beach, so, so we put two, two thousand dollars in there for, uh, for DPW. And then the, uh, the three thousand dollars for the, uh, for the capital outlay and nine-seventy, uh, oh shit, hold on. Oh, no, that's, that's the ice rink, so, yeah, other than that, it's, uh, it's major line items that, uh. So next is the, the ice rink, um, three thousand dollars for the capital outlay, uh, and the ice rink is four, is, uh, it's, um, in the Mary Creighton's as well, that's offset by Mary Creighton's. Um, that includes, uh, uh, new ice skates, new, uh, uh, new nets, uh, that type of thing, um. Then Mary Creighton's off, also offsets the, the other expenses through, uh, in that, that, uh, for eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, so. Uh, Mary Creighton's offices, that whole, um, that whole fund, um. Uh, eleven thousand one hundred and fifty for, for that, so. Any questions before we move on? All right, and then, uh, we have the, the sports park, um, the, the major expense in there from this year would be the snowcat repair. Um, they basically, uh. We, we, uh, took the engine off the hills, that snowcat, brought it in and they replaced basically the half, the top half of the engine. And it's been running great since then, so, um, that's a major expense for this, for this year. And then for next year, um, I put in there for the capital outlay, uh, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars would be for. Um, for the, for the cat shack, which is where we, where we house our, our snowcat, um, it'd be to, uh, concrete that floor in there. Um, insulate the walls, uh, the ceilings are insulated and then heat, heat that building, put in a heater in there as well. Um, it's, it's our shop during the winter, uh, it houses the snowcat and everything and, and, uh, right now the snowcat's sitting on, on, on dirt, um. So.
Hey, Jason, um, talking about the sports park up there, I know you had, there was a, um, media release or I think emailer. And I had been hearing a lot from citizens about the condition and number of tubes at the tube hill. Is there anything that, uh, you're looking at doing to, uh, maybe get some new tubes or add to the number of tubes that seems like a popular activity up there?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we are, I mean, the, the, the thing with the tubes up there is, uh, right now we're limited by the amount of space we have for the tube shack, we have a hundred and. We have a hundred and seven tubes, we can fit about, uh, thirty more tubes in there, um. I do definitely want to buy, uh, get more tubes for, for that, uh, up there. Um, and like I said, about thirty more, we could fit in that, in that, in that shack over there. Um, like, I, I spoke to other tubing hills and they kind of do it on the front end where, where they don't sell. Um, like for instance, one of the big tubing hills, uh, over in Wisconsin is, uh. shoot, what's the name now? I can't remember the name now. But 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 they have nine hundred and fifty tubes, they have forty-eight runs, they have two magic carpet rides coming up the hill, and and they do it on the front end, where they sell as many tickets as they do tubes, and they cut it off, and they charge twenty twenty bucks for every two hours. Or we kind of do it on the back end, because we don't have as many tubes, and we have three runs, but we kind of figure that, you know, we for three hours is ten dollars, so. Either you're waiting to go down the hill with a tube or without a tube, and if you gotta if you gotta wait for a tube, you know, you gotta wait to go down the hill anyways, because we have limited runs, and and you know, if you have a hundred people there anyways, you have a tube in your hand, and you're waiting as what anyway, so. We we make more money that way, because we sell more tickets, and we have tubes, then we turn, you know, we have people wait in line. It's one of those things where it's hard to get people to get that mindset to share their tube. I think it's a sharing problem. I don't think it's a tube problem, is if you ask me. So so, yeah, so I mean, we could do it the other way, but but as far as profits go.
I just I just don't know if I went up there with two or three kids, and I bought tickets, and I had to stand there and wait for a tube. And then maybe I turned around for two seconds, and somebody else who's been there for five minutes, and maybe I haven't been sitting there for twenty, and they grabbed the tube, you know what I mean? I know what you're talking about sharing, but I mean, just looking at it as a public service or a recreation service that the city kind of is providing, and I know we want to make money at it, but you know, how long before people just you know, start saying, well, I'm not going, because it's it's, you know, it's not fun.
Yeah, and and you know, we, you know, when they come up the lift, we have a line there, so I mean, people don't wait that long at all. I mean, I've I've been over there many times, and and you know, if we say any five tubes, if five people are going down, you know, we give tubes right away, because, you know, the line doesn't go to, you know. It goes fairly quickly, but yeah, it it it, you know, that that, I don't know if you've seen those comments on Facebook at all, but that was that was one group of people that are off in the same town.
No, I I do, I and I know, I know, being in business, you can get a thousand good customer interactions, and then you get one bad one, and the one bad one seems like a thousand, you know, I, you know, so I do know, I'm just wondering, you know, the the tubes are getting older, and I'm sure you've had to get rid of some of them, and I just heard from not that not that Facebook post, actually, just from some other some other folks that had gotten up there, and they were like, oh, jeez, the tubes are all cracked, and there wasn't, there wasn't enough of them, and I was like, oh, okay, well, I'll just ask.
Yeah, a- a- and and I do have, I do have money in there to purchase new tubes, more tubes for next year.
Perfect, okay, good, good answer.
Yeah, so.
Jason?
Yep.
I see you have the building worth eighteen thousand. Are we looking at putting a metal roof on or traditional asphalt shingles on?
That that quote was from independent roofing. That was for shingles. But I mean, um I could get a quote for the for the steel roofing. I'm not opposed to steel roofing at all. I just.
I said, no, for long-term, I mean, if I had to re-roof my house right now, which is getting close, I'm going to be, I I am going to be looking at metal, a metal roof, I mean, especially all of the options you have out there for a look. It doesn't look like a typical pole barn roof any longer, but it may be something worthwhile for a longer term, but I also know the building itself still needs a lot of upgrades to it and maintenance.
Yeah, and and that's that's why I hesitated to put money into that building personally. I mean, because it is an older building and and but it does need a rough, the independent roofing won't come over with their lift anymore and replace any of the shingles, and it's a twelve-toe pitch, so you know, to roofjack better. Yeah, with the sparkies lift up there, but definitely is, it needs a new roof. I think Paul Manager put that last roof up on there, and he did a horrible job. But alright, is it, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to campground. Alright, so campground. The I guess the biggest change on there was that sort of big change would be the, we have a safety, the safety guy, for those guys down there, twelve hundred dollars, that twenty-seven hundred dollars, which is in the contractor services. Twelve hundred dollars in there for for the safety guy. And then fifteen hundred dollars to refurbish some of those sites, the the pads and everything over there, which is covered, the fifteen hundred dollars is covered by the Mary Creighton's fund. Then we have, then put fifteen hundred dollars in there for wood chips over there, and that that playground last year DBW went over there and used some of that I left over from Ninth Street and built up those sites over there, those those tent sites over there. And flatten them out, so there's no low spots and no dips or anything, so water, you know, could pull up around there. And this year, I want I want to, I got to move those, that playground, those four section of section of the playground over there and level that and then install that back where it was, so. And that that one thousand dollars is in there as well for the for moving that playground, and then something to the that that paved walkway has washed out from the high water, so. I I I do have nine thousand in here for that to redo a paved walk or redo a walkway over there. Use neither that DNR trail mix or it'd be eleven thousand dollars to to repave it, but my my hope is to have leftover money from that boardwalk to extend it through the book to the campground. I wouldn't have to use any money for that, so, but that's where eleven thousand five hundred dollars comes in, and that is my Mary Creighton's fund. That's it.
Okay, last up is the debt service. Can you explain how the debt service fund works?
The debt service fund is basically just our payment for the bond of twenty-five grand, and then also our routine twenty-five thousand dollars that we transfer to the pension fund to go towards the unfunded liability. If we were ever to take money from there and transfer it to MERS. That's basically what makes up, we don't have the healthcare fund anymore, because we did all the healthcare buyouts back in nineteen twenty. So that's basically what the debt service is comprised of.
So getting down to what we're proposing for next year is expenditures of four point two seven seven million and we would like to transfer a hundred and thirty-seven thousand to fund balance. If all goes well.
Okay, is there anything else on the general fund, Eric, or what is or what's the Dr. Mary Creighton's? Are we, is that tonight, are we going to go and move on to that when we do, is that part, is that item D?
We will, yeah, we'll start that tomorrow night.
Okay, so that's actually new business item D, but we'll we'll move on to major street funds tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And if anybody has any questions or suggestions, this is the the first draft out. You know, we're pretty close on it. But there's always room for changes. We have a month and a half to finish this up, and so that's where it sits right now.
Hopefully, next year doesn't anything like twenty twenty-one budget, you know. As far as revenues or we get back to some regular activity, people can work, and we can get projects completed, and things just kind of fall into place instead of all this unknowing and having to adapt to everything different, so. I think everybody did, everybody did a good job here. I I like it. I like the fact that we're looking at building that fund balance back up under some normal activity.
Eric, hats off to you and the and the department heads for coming up with a a budget in the general fund, which is obviously a little bit more hard to predict of a transfer of fund balance of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Positive transfer. I remember, I remember back a few years ago on the commission the first time, and I bring this up just for the other commissioners, where we're going down, and there were some commissioners were looking at even trying to even pick apart the budget even more so so we could be out of the red, so now that I'm actually sitting on the commission, and we're looking at a fund balance of being up over seven hundred thousand dollars, that's that's remarkable, so hats off to all you guys.
Yeah, I think just a few years ago, we were only around four hundred thousand, wasn't it there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I remember being in the red.
Yeah, that was with when Darla was there.
Yeah, that and a little bit before, but yeah, during that timeframe, wasn't a good, wasn't a good timeframe. It's nice seeing actual a positive fund balance and a positive transfer.
And things are getting done, and projects are moving forward, and we're, things are better, getting better for the city, for the citizens, and I everybody did a great job of keeping keeping their budgets in, I mean, keeping their budgets in mind, but making sure that, you know, the the dollars are being spent diligently, and I think, you know, we don't have any public here tonight, and we usually don't when we meet in at City Hall, but I really wish sometimes somebody, some folks would come along and look at this and see the work that goes into this, and how much you think about every little thing, you know, a thousand dollars here, fifteen hundred there. It's not like we're just throwing around four billion dollars and just seeing where it lands. I mean, everybody's looking at where, you know, every little bit goes. So, thank you.
And I want to put a plug in for Vicky, because she's the one that punches in all the numbers.
Yes.
If there's any mistakes, you can blame her.
Well, if there's nothing else, if anybody else has anything else to add, we'll right around just a little bit after seven here, and I think that a couple hours of this each night is enough. Tomorrow, we will continue then with, start off at five o'clock with the major streets fund. Okay, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.